Whitlatch?
Here.
Villano?
Here.
Aguilar?
Here.
Please join me in standing to salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in liberty and justice for all. At this time, members of the public may come forward and address our commission on anything that's not on our agenda. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited at the time the item comes up for consideration by our commission. So that all interested parties may have opportunity to speak. Any person addressing Planning Commission may be limited by the chair on the amount of time. At all times, please use the microphone and give us your name and address for the record. So is there anyone here who would like to address the Planning Commission for anything that is not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will move along to the approval of minutes. I would like to make a motion to approve the last minutes.
I'll make the motion where you approve the April 24th minute.
Second, please.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Gong?
Yes.
Bellis?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Villano? Aguilar?
Yes.
We'll move along to item four. These parcel maps are public hearings. All actions on parcel maps in this section of the general be heard in one public hearing, unless anyone wishes to discuss any one of these items requested is pulled from a separate public hearing. Has anyone requested that anything be pulled from? Okay. So we'll move on to A. Please turn off your whatever.
Our phones.
Okay. A. I forgive you because I always forget and leave mine on. But anyway, A, Tended Parcel Map, PPM 10-047. Mary Kay Smolts? Smoots, thank you. Neil Zerling, her representative land surveyor. The action is a categorically exemption consistent with SEQA and state SEQA pursuant to Title 14 Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction of limited small facilities. Also, Section 15304, Class 4 pertaining to minor alterations of official lands such as grading. Section 15305, Class 5 pertaining to minor alterations to land use limitations. And also, Section 15311, Class... Is that two or is that a Roman or 11? Is that 11 or two? 11? Pertaining to construction and placement of minor structures and accessories to an existing facility and general rule exemption. Also, Section 15061B, 3, and a conditionally approved with exemptions, a waiver of final map, Tended Parcel Map, PPM 10-047, subject to findings and conditions. So do I have to open the public hearing?
Yes, you do need to.
Open the public hearing. Anyone like to come forward and give testimony on this? Yes, ma'am. Go right up to that microphone, right there.
I hear.
Your name and address for the record. And if that microphone's too high, there's Charlotte, there's what, a way to lower it?
I can get it.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for inviting us here today. My name is Mary Kay Smoots, and I am the youngest child of...
Address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. 14102 Avenue 224, Tulare, California.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm the youngest child of my parents, and I was left in charge of seeing that my mother's wishes were followed through. And in her will, she stated that there is a parcel that we're looking at today would be divided, as in the map, between three children. The reason why I come up today is my parents picked cotton for 25 cents an hour to purchase that land years and years ago, and so this was her wishes. And we... My brother Stanley Cassidy and my brother Victor Cassidy, who started this journey for us, is no longer with us. We lost both of them last year, or actually, last year and this year, six weeks apart. So here I am to represent us, and my brother Stanley Cassidy tried his best to see that my mother's wishes were taken care of as stated in her trust with a great amount of expenses and stuff, but it was that important to him and to us to see that this land would be divided and be given to their heirs.
Mary, I think we're going to be able to take care of you today, so...
Okay, so don't be quiet.
By the way, Stan was a true patriot, a Vietnam veteran, and a good man.
He was a very good man.
Very good.
We greatly missed, and...
Nice family.
Yes, so thank you very much. So you won't miss...
We'll give you a chance to come back if there's some controversy, okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So is there any staff recommendation on this? Are we...
Just recommend it for the action that's stated in there.
I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, as long as there's no other people want to come testify on this, for or against. Okay, moving on to my fellow commissioners. Do you have a motion to approve this action?
I'll make that motion. We approve this category exemption for PPM 10-047.
I'll second the motion. Roll call.
Gong?
Yes.
Bellis?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
No.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Villano? Norman, I'm sorry. Aguilar?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item B, Tended Parcel Map, PPM 12-031. The Vance Family and R.L. Schaefer's representative. The action is a categorically exemption consistent with California Environmental Quality Act and also the SEQA Guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to limited number of new small facilities or structures, and a conditionally approved Tended Parcel Map, number PPM 12-031. I'll open up the public comment. Does anyone like to come forward to comment on this, for or against? Give your name and address for the record, please.
Michael Tharp, appearing for Mr. Schaefer, R.L. Schaefer and Associates, 2904 West Main Street, Visalia. On behalf of our clients, Samirian and Diana Vance, available for questions.
Any questions? Don't go yet, Mike. Fellow commissioners, any questions? No? Okay, thank you. Does anyone else like to come forward and testify at this time? If not, I'll close the public testimony and go to the pleasure of the commission. They would like to approve this. Make this motion, please.
I'll make that motion to approve the Tended Parcel Map, PPM 12-031.
Do I have a second, please? Roll call.
Gong?
Yes.
Bellis?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Villano? Aguilar?
Yes.
We have a lot of items today, so I want to make sure that I'm not moving too quick. Am I moving too quick? Okay, good.
We'll let you know.
I know you would, but you're still... Okay. Also, I noticed, Charlotte, that a couple of these were court ordered, and so is this just a courtesy? Because I thought the court had the power to create these parcels if they so ordered them.
It's a concurrent process. The court exercises its authority consistent with its probate power, and we exercise our authority pursuant to the police power, which includes land use and dividing of land.
Would the court ultimately could trump our decision if we didn't agree?
That is an interesting legal question.
Maybe for another day, okay?
The courts haven't decided that as explicitly as perhaps we would want, but we think we're following the middle ground here.
Thank you. So to see Tended Parcel Map, PPM 13-003. Action is categorically exemption consistent with SEQA and state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction and conversion of small structures, and conditionally approved Tended Parcel Map, PPM 13-003. I'll open the public comment, and anyone from the public would like to come forward and comment on this? Neil, are you there? Zerling, I saw him a minute ago.
Thank you, Neil Zerlang, Land Surveyor, 2908 West Main Street. I have no comments, but I am available for questions this morning if you would like.
Any questions?
Question, Neil. This is just a standard home retention split, it looks like. Is that...
That's correct. I'm actually representing Jim Simons, who is a purchaser of the Hall property, and the residence that the Hall's own is being split off so that they can retain it. Mr. Simons will be farming the acreage.
Thanks, Neil.
Thank you, Neil. Any other further public testimony? Seeing none, I will close the public comment and move along to the Planning Commission for a motion to approve or disapprove.
I'll make the... I'll make... Oh, go ahead. All right. I'll make the motion that we approve a categorical exemption to SEQA and that we conditionally approve the tentative map, PPM 13-003.
May I have a second? Okay. Roll call, please.
Gong?
Yes.
Bellis?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Villano? Aguilar?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to item five, which are public hearings. Special use permit, PSP 10-042. This is for the Foothill Bible Church. There'll be a staff report on this. Two actions: adopt a negative declaration for special use permit and adopt a special use permit, PSP 10-042, and adopt a resolution to establish findings and conditions for the approval. April Hill is our staff person. Morning, April.
Good morning, Chairman Whitlatch and Commissioners. We've passed out this morning some slides, just in case the power can went out again, and also some correspondence from the State Clearing House regarding this church expansion. Foothill Bible Church requested a special use permit, final site plan to amend the 2007 special use permit and allow the expansion of a church facility on a four-acre portion of a 9.94 acre site in Elderwood. The environmental assessment officer has approved a negative declaration indicating the proposed project could not have a significant effect on the environment. A notice was published and circulated through the State Clearing House and also mailed to surrounding property owners before the scheduled hearing. Subject's site is on the west side of Road 200, about 350 feet north of State Route 201 and 800 feet west of State Route 245. Site is outside any development boundary and is governed by the Foothill Growth Management Plan in the Badger-Elderwood Development Corridor, which designates the site for urban expansion. The project complies with relevant policies of the general plan, which are listed in the agenda item and detailed in the attached report. Site is in the PDFM Zone, Planned Development Foothill Special Mobile Home. The PD Zone requires an approved final site plan, which acts as a use permit for the church. The foothill zone is intended to be combined with the PD Zone and has specific land alteration requirements, including grading, erosion controls. The M Zone allows a mixture of conventional housing and individual mobile homes, but the applicant, a church, proposes no residences. With conditions of approval to ensure compliance, the project meets the requirements of the zones and complies with the zoning ordinance. Here's an aerial of the site taken in about 2012. The church structures are all clustered in the northeast corner, and with parking in the southeast and a drainage basin on the southwest. The new proposed worship center will be just west of the current classrooms and new classrooms just north of the current sanctuary and shopping area, shop building on the northern boundary. From 1970 to about 1996, the site was used for a summer youth camp, weekend group activities, and a missionary training school that were approved by use permits, and then was converted to a worship facility in 1996. There's about 20 residences along the Road 200, which dead ends about half mile north of the highway, the 201. Church activities include Sunday services with a maximum 300 attendees after construction, weekend evening classes with about 30, weekend youth activities, weekday evening youth activities with 30 to 60, concerts or special events with up to about 200. The maximum attendance on the site at one time will be limited to 500, the same as the previous use permit. There's little traffic would take place during peak hours, and Caltrans commented that no impact is expected on state facilities if the attendance is limited to 500. They did suggest a traffic management plan from the applicant to enable them to put up signs to direct traffic if needed. The applicant also halts amplified music from potential outdoor concerts by a normal curfew of 10:00 p.m. on weeknights and 11:00 p.m. on weekends. And a condition of approval is included to limit the event hours. They are considering their neighbors. California Department of Fish and Game Natural Diversity Database shows the subject's site in the range of San Joaquin Valley Orkut Grass and near spiny seepled button celery, which are listed as rare plants and sensitive species. But the property has been graded, leveled, is regularly maintained, and the wildflowers are not likely to be found on the site. Regarding cultural resources, a cultural resources records search was conducted in January 2013. They found no recorded cultural resources on or near the site. The information center stated that if underground utilities were in place, no further cultural resources investigations were needed at this time. And as noted, the property has been used as a summer camp, it's been excavated, graded, has underground irrigation lines, and so we're not having to proceed with any more intense archaeological studies. Standard conditions of approval require construction to cease if artifacts or human remains are found. Cottonwood Creek is off the property, about 460 feet east. That's the blue line. A seasonal creek used to flow through the western portion of the subject parcel to a drainage pond in the southwest quadrant, but both have been reconfigured through the years, as you saw in the aerial. The pond was officially designated as a wetland, but is no longer a natural pond and is maintained by Delta Vector Control District. Site is in flood zone X, requires no specific flood avoidance measures. Conditions of approval and requires structures and septic systems to be located away from the pond. Here's the site planned. Proposed worship center, the existing worship center to be converted, additional classroom space, and the shop building, new shop building. Public Works recommended no new conditions of approval for the project, which expands in existing use. Standard condition of approval is that all onsite parking areas and driveways are surfaced and maintained for all weather conditions. That has the parking surfaces been recently improved with gravel and oil, sealed with oil. The driveways are also gravel. We will be having a drive approach constructed to match the road surface, the surface of the public road, 200. Villarreal County Environmental Health Services District requires an engineered septic system and that the existing domestic well be regulated as a public water system. And the applicant has started the process of going through and the analysis of that water and well to turn it into a public system. San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District requires the applicant to comply with indirect source Rule 9510, and the applicant's air impact analysis has been accepted. Just got the letter to the applicant, got a copy of that letter to the applicant. Here are some site photos, thanks to Google and the website. I did go to the site in 2011. Here are some photos approaching from the south along to around Road 200. Here's the drive approach on the south entrance and on the north entrance in 2012. The, as we said before, the drive approaches will match the surface on the existing public road, which right now is asphalt. 2011 photos of the parking lot. Additional gravel was laid and oiled on the lot in 2012 to control dust. Views to the southeast, southwest, and to the east. Surrounding property owners were notified of the proposed project by mail and by public notice. We did have two neighbors come forward. One was concerned about whether we're going to be mobile homes. Nope, it's going to continue as a church. Other neighbors were concerned about dust and the surface of the driveways and the parking lot, and also expressed concerns about the conditions on Road 200. State Clearing House comment period ran from April 2nd to May 1st. The Native American Heritage Commission recommended records search, which has been done. The air district noted that they had received the air impact assessment. Caltrans recommended the traffic management plan in case events impact the operations of the highways. This and staff's report. The agents and several church members are here in attendance if you have questions that I cannot answer.
Do you have any questions for April, please?
You did mention something about concerts, all indoor concerts?
I believe some might be outdoor, but our standard conditions are point the speakers into the property and curfew of 10:00 o'clock on weeknights and 11:00 o'clock on weekends. We can confirm that.
Any questions? If not, go ahead. No residents on the site, no living on site?
No one is living on the site, no.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Those who are in favor of the project, we invite them to come up first. And so do we have the representative for the project here that would like to speak? Please give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Darwin Hakobian. I'm at 19839 Avenue 364, Woodlake, California. I am the stewardship elder at Foothill Bible. I want to thank Ms. April for doing a tremendous job. One of the concerns that we had with going forward was dust control. And in 2013, we had the Air Resource Board come and do a granular test, which they approved. But in order to be good neighbors and to be able to service the neighbors that live to the west of us, Foothill Bible has invested quite a bit in gravelling their circular driveway with pea gravel, and we also intend to put a concrete curbway around it so it'll hold everything in. The overflow parking has been oiled and has been maintained. So we are basically dust-free, 100% dust-free. We have almost seven acres that are irrigated and mowed weekly, and then we have the pond. That was the concern that the church had, that was a concern that one of the neighbors had, and those have been rectified. So, thank you. Any questions?
Any questions by fellow board members?
Is there a planned number of the outdoor concerts?
We've had three concerts in 11 years, but to be forthright and to have it in the application, you know, we put it in there. We've had three. One time, it was the Sons of the San Joaquin that came. I think there was 150 people that showed up for that. Another time, it was a duet-type situation. We had about 100 people. I want to remind the board that this is Elderwood, California. We're not going to have a flow of, you know, thousands of people coming in. We have 174 people that live up there, and so we're just a small community moving forward. But unfortunately, every one of our men weigh about 300 pounds. And so... And our facility now is set up to where, you know, you've got big cowboys that don't want to sit shoulder to shoulder. You know, there's cowboy hats bigger in there than me, you know? And so what we're basically looking for is we grow in the future is to be able to have a sanctuary where we can kind of spread our wings. We're not looking into bringing in, you know, rock concerts and what have you, but in order to be upfront, we wanted to let you know that on occasion, we're averaging about one every four years, so...
Any other questions? Thank you very much. We'll give you an opportunity, if there's some opposition, to come back and speak, okay, at the end? Anyone else like to come forward and give new testimony on this? Anybody like to speak against it? If not, I'll close... Whoops. Can I please come forward, give your name and address for the record, please?
Morning. My name is Carolyn Cramlett. I live directly across the street from Foothill Bible Church at 37722, Road 200, Woodlake, California. I've prepared a statement that I'd like to enter into the record, but I realize at this point that some of it is inaccurate. I guess I would beg the commission to bear with me as I read this to you.
Go ahead.
To whom it may concern, I am a taxpaying resident of Elderwood who has lived directly across the road from Foothill Bible Church for 10 years. I was until recently a member in regular attendance and a financial contributor. I have reservations about the willingness of the church to comply with the guidelines set forth by this new permit, about a lack of past compliance to known guidelines by knowledgeable persons assigned to church projects, and about past projects done without proper permits. I have concerns about the current condition of Road 200, the future condition of Road 200 after the introduction of heavy equipment, the nuisance of unconfined gravel strewn onto Road 200 from two driveways, the actual capacity of unmarked parking lots, roadside parking on this narrow road, and the safety of children near an unfenced pond. I saw no reference to the use of the church as a polling place, the weekly Sunday evening AA meetings, various church committee meetings, nor special events like weddings or memorials. The current conditional use permit clearly stated that the parking lots were to be maintained dust and mud-free. The church failed to comply even when evidence of dust was visible week after week. It was only through repeated complaints made to code enforcement and the resulting official contact made that a resolution was promised. I ask that the Planning Commission consider my statements and concerns when making its decision. Thank you.
Ma'am, is there anything that you say that's changed that... Philma, can you get... Velma, can you get her statement for the record, please? Can you go get it from her, please? Thank you very much. Are there some things that have changed in your mind since you've written the statement that you'd like to say that?
Well, from what Alice Hill has said.
April, April Hill.
April, I'm sorry. Got that first letter on. The approaches, and I'm assuming that it's only the north parking lot, will be paved. Right now, there's gravel that goes out into the road that, without being taken care of, will come out onto the road, could possibly come up on a windshield, who knows? It makes a mess, it's, it's littering as far as I'm concerned. It's not contained. I don't understand exactly what's to take place, but I have a question as to when this will take place.
Okay, I will bring that question up for you, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming forward. Anyone else like to come forward and testify at this time? Just, just start making your way to the front and we'll take you one at a time. Name and address for the record, please?
My name's Kirk Cramlett. I live at three seven seven two-two, road two hundred, across the street from Foothill Bible Church. I'm Carolyn's husband. I have a statement I'd like to read to.
Go ahead.
Foothill Bible Church has never complied with their conditional use permit of two thousand and seven that states that they will maintain parking lots mud and dust-free and will only meet on Sunday and Wednesday. In two thousand and seven, I donated ten thousand dollars for dust control and was told to put the money in the building fund and the dust problem would be addressed. At the time, I didn't know that there was a conditional use permit. If I had, I had never put the money in the building fund. In two thousand and eleven, my neighbor, Mr. Barton, let me read a copy of the existing conditional use permit. I realized it, complained to the elders and to the pastor of Foothill Bible Church, was getting nowhere and I, nowhere. And I can, and I complained, and the complaints of dust were, were... The more I complained about the dust, the more dust was purposely made. I made copies of the permit and handed them out to my neighbors and we called code enforcement and complained. It still took more than two summers for the church to put oil on the south parking lot. This one coat of oil is already wearing off at the entrance. Last fall, one pile of rock was left on the north parking lot and was not spread until a call to Glenn McIntyre at code enforcement. The rest of the lot was not rocked until February of this year, just weeks before we received this notice of this hearing. The rock is better than not having anything at all. I have rock on my driveway and I have to keep it watered down because for some reason the dust still migrates up through the rock. So at least it's better than nothing, but if they don't maintain it, which they haven't done in the past, we're still going to have the dust problem. That's it.
Thank you.
The project is fine. I've got no problem with their doing. I love the church. I was a member, but these concerns, I can't be a member anymore.
Would you like to give a copy of your letter to April, okay? Thank you. Yes, ma'am, would you like to come forward, please?
Good morning. My name is Terry Akobian and I live at one nine eight three nine Avenue three six four, Wood Lake, California. I beg your pardon if I'm out of line here. I was waiting for someone to positively respond when the other side came to respond. So my, my, my statement here is in regards to the positive aspect of Foothill Bible. As was mentioned before, we are from a very small community. This community is a lot of farmers, a lot of very busy people in regards to making their, living through farming, through cattle, through things of such, what a, you know, that type of, of an area would provide for. When we started to address the situation with the dust and, and with the, the complications of, of a growing church or a seeking to grow church, one thing that was a big factor of is, as I stated before, it's a small community. So in the process of making arrangements for these things, sometimes you kind of have to wait till the funds build up. Sometimes you don't. Sometimes somebody is very willing to bless the church with, with things as such. So in the process of trying to plan it out and make it happen, trying to be as frugal as we can with the highest payers' monies, we've tried our best to be accommodating to our neighbors. It's very important to be accommodating to our neighbors due to the fact that we cannot claim to be Christ-like individuals or seeking a Christian-type lifestyle and operate on the other side of the coin. So we have, we have our Heavenly Father to be held accountable in our, in our Christian faith, our walk. Basically, you're going to talk it, you gotta walk it, so in a nutshell. We have done our best to try to keep the peace and it's something that we will continue to strive for, to keep the peace. Because we believe that if we're going to be teaching Jesus Christ within our, within our walls, we need to also live that walk. Need to be able to live what we're teaching. Coming from the, the inside of what's going on in Foothill Bible Church, in the past, I was very deeply involved with the youth that were there and I saw a lot of stuff going on in that small community that if they didn't have this, this area to come to, if they didn't have this outlet to come to, their answer to life was, mom and dad raises us, we're in a farming community, there's not a whole lot to do, there's no bowling alley, there's no movie theaters. If you don't have a vehicle, you're stuck there. And in that small area, basically about all there is to do is to go find an abandoned building and, and God forbid, but it happens. I mean, you have access to drugs there, you have access to alcohol there, and the children have no other outlet. They have nothing but what they see on a daily basis and what they have access to. Foothill Bible is trying to be that alternative. They're trying to reach the children, they're trying to reach this age group here so this age group can minister to their families and that age group can minister to that family. We have a motto at our church and it says, basically, when you, you, you teach the truth, you train the team and you target that third generation. That's where we are trying to go into, is that, give these kids an alternative place to go. And as, as the children come and migrate this way on a Wednesday night after school and after sports, we feed them there, we love on them there, we give them a place to come and we teach them what Christ has for them, that alternative lifestyle, which means you can find something within yourself, you can be someone within yourself. You don't have to rely on what...
I'm going to interrupt you because I agree with all those values. And that's my walk also, and I would suggest probably most of the people you see sitting in this room. But the most important thing is, is no one complains about the noise, but they just complain about the dust. And do you think, as a member of that congregation, that you can keep the dust down and make sure that it's not drifting across the road and sweep the gravel off the road? Can you do all those things, is that?
I can, I can guarantee you one thing. Knowing people that I serve the Lord with and knowing this church body that I attend with and that I consider my body, they are all loving people, they are very kind people, and they want nothing more than to be in peace with those around them. And if it's going to take, like one young man told me, he said, you should be really proud of that place because that's, that's one place in this entire area that we can go and feel safe at. And if that's going to be that big of a deal, I guarantee you, come workdays and what, there's going to be all kinds of kids running around there doing things. What we are seeking here is peace and unity and living in harmony. We don't want anything but that. And whatever it takes in regards to, if we have to sweep the road, we'll sweep the picking road.
So that was a personal guarantee?
What, if I have to do it myself, I would be more than happy to do that, please.
Okay, thank you, girl. Go ahead.
Bill, maybe this is a pertinent question. What's the water source for the church?
They have a well.
It's a well, sir.
Because we know, you know, and I'm very familiar with that site and I actually know that neighborhood quite well out there. I, at certain times of year, it's going to be dusty out there. There's no doubt about, we got some rain the last couple of days. Thank the big guy upstairs. But you know, the thing is, is maybe we need to schedule in some kind of watering thing or at least some kind of maintenance on a regular basis that's just going to occur seasonally because it's definitely going to be needed, so.
Excuse me, if you read the condition number thirteen, it addresses that.
I think the issue with the neighbors are and their conditions require them to keep the dust down. So I would say that the neighbors who have had the problem, they just need to file a complaint and we'll hear, rehear it again, so. But anyway, we have a church member who's, owns a broom, so she's going to clean house, I think, so.
Thirteen, thirteen, they're required to spray the, with water within twenty-four hours of large assemblages such as Sunday worship services.
I guess that'd do it, that'd do it.
They just need to wear that they are required to do that.
Thank you very much and God bless you.
Thank you, I appreciate you listening. Have a blessed day.
Anyone else like to come forward and give new testimony for or against?
We do it at our...
If not, I'll close the public testimony and go on to the staff's recommendation, which...
One moment, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, go ahead. We have one more person?
Right here.
I'm sorry.
I'm Darwin Akobian. I'd like to just ensure the Cramlins, the county was very good about being the liaison between the church and the Cramlins to figure out the dust issue. The gravel that the Cramlins are concerned with, we matched exactly what they have. And so they're right across from each other. The gravel we put out in the street is the gravel they put out in the street. We chose to put four inches of gravel down. We don't have the dust problem that the Cramlins do. They were able to put a little thinner layer down. It works, it does work. On our end of it, I put two hundred tons in that small area, thinnest area there is four-inch thick, some of six, and it is groomed weekly. We have a gentleman in the church that actually runs a wire mesh across it and grooms it weekly for Sunday. It looks brand new every week, so I think we've gotten past the dust issue. I appreciate the Cramlins bringing that up. We've spent twenty-one thousand dollars there the last year making sure of that and will continue to, to maintain it, so.
So just keep the dust down, so we don't have to have you come back?
At this point, we're dust-free, but we'll, that, that is the concern and that's where we're going to go with it, you know, so we'll do our best.
And I hope the neighbors have your phone number. They do?
I'm sorry?
Do your neighbors have your phone number, so when they have a call?
Oh, yes, they do. Every one of them do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before we proceed to the recommendation, let me make a comment and perhaps a suggestion. In light of the information that was provided during the public hearing, particularly regarding the dust, may I suggest this? In the interest of clarifying and also providing adequate assurances that the dust control obligations that are clearly set forth in the resolution, and they are in particular on page ten and eleven, that deal with specifically very detailed San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution and Control District rules and permits with which the applicant must comply. In the interest of clarification, perhaps for your consideration, we could add a condition, let's say number thirty-six, which would be a new condition, that, for example, within sixty days after approval of this permit, if that was the will of the commission, the applicant submits a dust management plan for review and approval by staff and that would be provided to the neighbors so that they have a very organized and clear document in which to see just exactly what the applicant is going to be doing or required to do regarding dust control obligations. We believe that the standards set forth in the conditions of approval are adequate, but all this would do is clarify and amplify the obligation to ensure that the neighbors know that the dust control matter will be addressed properly.
I'd like to see thirty days because we're going into the dust season and so. Okay, thank you. I think I close the public testimony and we will go on to the commission's pleasure on this and I think we know what the staff recommends and that condition, adding a, a plan within thirty days seems reasonable. So commissioners, what would you like to do? Like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion adding the commission, the condition that Mr. Spata has suggested in item thirty-six.
Within thirty days?
Uh, within thirty days. You okay with that?
After the recordation of the permit, to be clear.
Yes.
I will recommend action that we adopt the negative declaration for special use permit PSP ten dash zero four two.
We have two motions.
I know, there are two.
Okay, so do I have a second on that first motion, please?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call?
Long?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Trilliano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
I look for a motion on the actions, special use permit?
I approve the special use permit PSP ten dash zero forty-two and adopt the resolution establishing findings and conditions of approval for that project.
Is it more appropriate we put that additional condition in that, under that item?
All, all you would need to say is, and add the condition as indicated by staff.
It says findings and conditions, so, and, and add?
Okay, roll call? I mean, do we have a second first?
I'll second it.
Roll call?
Long?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Trilliano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
So we have gone ahead and passed this resolution. For those who were, had some opposition because of dust, you have, you have an option. If, if you continue to have dusty, contact April Hill and we will take care of it. But hopefully, the church members and your neighbors can work it out amongst themselves. So thank you very much. With that, we're taking a five-minute break. Thank you, or actually, yeah, five minutes, please. Ms. White?